At this time, I'd like to call on meeting to order. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the public is strongly encouraged to wear face masks covering. Social distancing measures have been put in place. Seating is limited. Reminding before the meeting begins, we ask that you silence your cell phones. We're going to ask Councilmember Scott to give us an indication, and Councilmember Cook to give us a pledge of allegiance at this time.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you, dear God, for life. We thank you for another day. We thank you, dear God, for the season. We thank you, dear Father, that we be able to assemble together to take care of the benefits of the city, to be concerned about our community. We pray to have a Father that we have good ideas and good minds and develop a skill that will last forever in the city of Lake City. Blessed in the mighty name we pray, amen.
Amen.
By the Lord.
To the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, please vote for Councilmember.
Councilmember Eulika Robinson?
Present.
Councilmember Richard Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Wilhelmina Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Sandra Fleming-Cosbury?
Here.
Councilmember William Askins? Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Segletary?
Present.
Mayor Love Anderson?
Present.
I find there to be a quorum, present.
Thank you. At this time, we're ready to go into our work session. Note that the work session is for discussion only. I think we need a motion to, or you want to make sure that everybody knows that we will not discuss item A on the agenda tonight, and we will move on to item B. And that is a discussion of the American Rescue Act guidelines and policy. You got to approve the agenda?
I'm making my own.
We're moving too fast.
Huh?
Yeah, we should. Need a motion? Well, okay, in that motion to approve the agenda, we'll take item three A out there.
Make them, we already made the motion?
No.
You need to approve. Sacre.
Okay, item, so we're ready for item B. Sorry, we're ready to vote.
We need to vote.
Yeah. All who favor that, hands up. Next item will be, item B, a discussion of the American Rescue Act guidelines and policy. What do we need to say?
All right, good evening, Mayor Council. Your asset we go through there in American Rescue Plan, we've put together a few slides. There is a booklet in front of you that are matching these slides that we'll be looking at and discussing this evening to give us a better idea of what the federal government has done and what our guidelines are to spend this money and allocate this money. As we already know, the funds we already have in the bank were 1.6 million dollars and some change. This is to countering the spread of COVID-19, investing in public health, mitigating economic impact, supporting disproportionately affected communities, investing in infrastructure, replacing lost revenue and premium pay. These are the items that were specified in the interim rule set down from the Treasury. Once this bill is put into effect, these are guidelines that we have to use when considering allocating the funds for spending. Continuing, containing spread of COVID. Now, as we all know, COVID remains vigilant in our daily lives. When we return to everyday activity, we can take each, take some of these simple steps to protect ourselves and our families and our community. One of them is getting COVID vaccine shot. One of them is washing hands, often with clean soap and water. Cover our mouths, noses, and masks when around others. Avoid crowds, participate in social distancing, stay at least six feet apart from others. This is what's been taught to us since COVID started. We preach it in everywhere we go. We require it, we recommend it, because our governor says that it cannot be recommended. He's not yet mandated mask mandates, but this is a safe procedure to make sure we try to counteract the COVID. At this point, anybody that's age five and older can get a COVID shot, and it's free. The vaccine is the best way to prevent everyone from COVID-19. And at the end of the day, the federal government pays all those bills. It's free, so they are doing their part to make sure we have the capability of getting these shots. Any questions? All right, then, investing in public health. Then, we look at this as responding to COVID-19. The role of the public health is to ensure and deliver equitable healthcare to rural communities. The impact of such crisis is exacerbated in rural, racial, and minority minorities. Elements contributing to the problems identified in rural areas are declining population, economics stagnation, shortages of positions and other healthcare providers, a disproportionate number of older, poor, and underinsured residents, and high rates of chronic illness. And in all about that, we probably have a little bit of everything that's listed here in City of Lake City. Now, the key of actors focused on mitigating actions directly related to COVID-19 should be on preventing preventative measures that avoid the occurrence of impact and thus voiding harm, produce positive outcomes, measure the focus of limiting the severity and the duration of COVID, mechanisms for those impacts that are unavoidable and cannot be reduced further. So these are mitigating economic impacts that we are faced with and that the federal government talks about in the interim report that has been released to us. Now, on a survey that was done in 2020, disadvantaged and minority communities are experiencing higher rates of infection and death from this disease. Now, I can say that we have not seen that in Lake City. It's not really impacted us as much as it has done all the communities across the United States. So we've got our message out. We've got a lot of return on the shots, and I think people are practicing the mask and the social distancing. Greater economic impact because of the social factors that are challenging in normal times are only amplified in global health crisis. That means people can't work, the income is low, and everybody's facing pretty much the same thing. Yes, or go right ahead, Councilmember Cook.
You tell me, can you find out how many businesses have shut down?
Chief, would you happen to know that the impact of our businesses closing?
No.
I'm gonna have to do some investigating on that because I've really not heard that we've lost any businesses. I know we had some closed because they didn't have employees to work, but.
Well, maybe that's sealed.
That's a railway, railway closed, under that. Was that a result of COVID?
Yeah.
I think so. I don't know that has any impact on the thing, but I mean, I just know what the.
I knew of one that was closing, but they decided to open back up and not close. So that's the only one we had in discussion. Another that no one had really shared that the impact of COVID has forced their door shut. I didn't know that railway considered COVID being the reason for their closing. Although I had heard that they were struggling anyway.
I mean, it's complicated, but basically COVID was one of the causes. It's not bad for a business, a bunch, but.
Because when you go down Main Street, pretty much everybody's still open. That was before COVID. I mean, I know they took a hit in some of their revenues, but at least the doors are still open.
That's stimulus last year.
But I will, I will ask around and see if we can come up with something to answer, give you some type of guidance on that. But like I say, I'm not aware of anybody that's actually shut their door and blamed it on COVID.
We'll touch bases with Mayor Kelly.
Mayor Kelly, correct, okay.
And then you agree with O.K.C. that that's closed, that closed out too. But that one.
No, that was Manny. I have a feeling, yes. But we'll also inquire about that one too.
Good chat, Colonel.
Aunt Kate, yeah, okay, that was what, what's the name of that place?
Crab House.
Crab House.
You know, he owned one in Florence.
They closed down too. And then they turned it into a, what is it, a sports bar? A buffet?
No, a seafood restaurant.
They got buffet coming. For the one in Florence, Lake City, they tore down, they tore down an existing wall, low bearing wall, right? And they didn't submit proper plans and protocol.
Who didn't?
The people over at Lake City, at the old Crab House, that were going to convert it to a sports bar also, but they didn't follow proper protocols, submit plans, and they tore down a low bearing wall, and they got a stop order. All right, can you have questions on this? All right, now, on this, supporting disproportionately affected communities in the rule that was set down, people can make applications to us for funds to help counteract what they lost during COVID. So the housing authority has sent us an official letter requesting that we share with them 113,068 dollars. The housing authority being a state fund in August. Now, this represents lost income from not paying for rent and not being allowed to evict the tenants because the judge is not putting the people out in the streets because they have no place to go. So even though there are places for them to file for assistance, they're asking for this as a relief in their lost revenue and rental. So I have that letter in my office, and I'm sharing this with you tonight because this would impact the bottom line. If Mayor Council decides to go down that line to contribute to the housing authorities' loss of rent.
Are you going, would you go down the same line with realtors and renters?
I don't see where a realtor would be the same thing as a housing authority because they have revenue where they sell.
It's bad.
I'm talking about renting.
Oh, you're talking about landlords.
Landlords, it's kind of like that. Would you, would you go down the same path with them?
Well, they have rental assistance.
They're rentals.
Yeah, they got rental assistance and stuff, programs right now, until the end of the year.
The state does have the SC State Plus program where they are allowing people to apply for building assistance, rental assistance, or whatever, and getting a lot over in the water department, where they're sending money over, not only for their current bills, but also their remaining several months out due back.
Is this group, is this group here, have everything they can do? I, I, I'm sorry. As the housing authority. That's what brought you here, Mr. Bush. That is a good question. At this point, though, I think looking at what it is, there is a lot of assistance out there that I would perceive that we would look at what they've done to try to accumulate some of that assistance that's out there to help them along the way. If they're not doing it, then they're not being, you know. That's just pulling away from us. We've got plenty of them on this side.
Councilmember Cook, what we're in the process of doing is putting together a card or a letter that will bring all the agencies that have assistance for our community on one place, listing them, their phone numbers, their website, what's required, and the documents they need to fulfill the obligation so they can get assistance. Because we have some elderly people that's really not educated enough to be able to follow in on a computer written program. So we're going to put it on one page and try to get them, out to them so they can have a direction to go instead of just saying, I don't know. So we can say, well, here's a sheet, follow these instructions. And we've even got some of our people that go over and say, well, this is what we need done, and walk them through the steps so they can get some assistance.
I mean, I would say on this right here, I mean, the housing authority is part of, you know, our community, in our area of Lake City. And there are, you know, ways that they can, like the SC State, that their residents can do it, but like when you were saying, it's very hard for some people to actually comprehend and doing that themselves. You know, the elderly people, the ones that don't have anyone to help them out. I know that at the, I think it's at the agency in Florence, they have an in-person, a place you can go for in-person help. But that's in Florence. We are Lake City, and a lot of people don't have transportation to do that.
Brown Street is where we pretty much direct Lake City to.
Right.
And I'm going to give it to my, to the staff that we have in the water department. If she has to get in the car and go visit the people, especially if they're older because they can't get out, she'll take the documents and get them signed and get it processed so we can at least try to go forward and give them some help. We don't just leave them stranded. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Should not the housing authority have somebody in place to help these people? Not necessarily the city, but the housing authority. They have money for the housing authority.
Play with it.
That recovered their rent. God knows, I know something that, you know, really being denied, doctor, a back to rent, and then the company, the city. So it is, there's always ways of them getting that money, the doctor paid them that, you got it.
I think it's, because I went to their last meeting, and they have their meeting tonight. And I'm pretty sure a representative probably would have come tonight if they could have. I think that's why the letter was sent to the city to.
And you're correct.
Yeah, as a request, not a demand, of course, but as a request to see if the city could help because of what they lost and help their residents because of, of that failed to rent and so forth. But it was spoken at their meeting that they have those options as far as SC State. But I think those funds too, or the application process do end at the end of the year. So you have like, what, three weeks?
Three weeks.
So it's just a request to see if possibly we could help. I mean, there are our residents of Lake City.
And I don't think there's a problem with system of residence.
Yes, yes.
You know, we want to make sure they, what they, you know, what they got.
Friends coming out the woodwork.
When it comes to water, you got frantic and around that we're not accepting, and people react to it, and so the folks that have the labor order, which to me, I mean, that doesn't make any sense not to do that. You got to make sure that they're following the processes that are in place because there are, and we all know that there is some money out there that can sit through. You telling me O.R.A. refused to take the money? Yes. All right, and we, they still owe us money? Yes. So wrong with that? Something wrong with that pick? Yes. Okay.
What do they owe us money for?
Water.
Oh, water.
Anything else before I move on? Councilmember Cook, you good? All right, our next slide is, when we're talking about the items that we can spend the money on, because the federal government and the, and the report that they sent down that we use to model what we can do investing in infrastructure. And infrastructure is something we have in the city that is starting to hurt. This is a big copy of the checkerboard well and tower. It needs some work on it. The next one is the Matthews Road well and tower. It's also up for inspection and needs some work on it. We also, we have a sheet that I passed out just this evening that says ACS on it. We just got this letter emailed to us, this 32,000 dollar bill to fix the pump on the checkerboard well. So that's part of the infrastructure. This is some stuff that's not budgeted for, but yet it's part of our infrastructure that we have to address. We also have them working on the Matthews Road well, Brett Ricky, Marsh Street. I'm sorry, because the well is going out there also. So 32 dollars over checkerboard, and then we have the other one on Marsh Street that we don't know what the cost is going to be yet. So this is part of the city's infrastructure that we need to start thinking about and addressing. These have been things that we, we knew that were coming up and we were planning for, but now it gives us an opportunity to take care of. We also have the sewer cave in over Carver and Floyd Street. That's something that's been going on, how long, Ricky? Couple of years? And it's a patchwork every time you turn around. We also have Blanding Street and Dancing Street. We did get part of the pipe, we waited for the last set of pipe, and then get the schedule for who is going to be digging deep. We'll come and put those in, so that's another expense. That road's been closed for almost five years. We'll be able to get it back open. And we also have Matthews, the Martha Law area. It's almost a sewer. We've got about 100,000 we've done over there repairing sewer lines, and that needs a lot of repair work over it. So we've got infrastructure that the city has to deal with. So in reality, the city got 1 million 617,000 dollars. And if we look at what we've estimated to checkerboard, the Matthews water tank, the sewer cave in the Carver and Floyd Street, and if we put take, put Martha Law sewer replacement at 1.5 million, and what the premium pay was to the employees, we now, and then what we get next year, 12 months from October 29th, 2022, we'll get the same amount. Ricky says we need to do some sewer backs. We've accounted for that. We literally are breaking even with the infrastructure part. If we invest back into our infrastructure, these are critical items that need to be addressed.
Explain premium pay.
Premium pay was the one that was approved that if the employees were not allowed, if the employees had to come to work, not stay home, they were eligible for the government, federal pay, to get premium pay for the federal government. That's what premium pay. Everybody in the area of the surrounding counties, cities, municipalities, and all paid their employees premium pay. Were actually putting theirself on the line during the COVID epidemic. So y'all, y'all approved it in a resolution last month to pay out the employees for premium pay. The fire, police got one thing, and every employee that was dealing with the other staff got a different amount.
So we're gonna need that money back.
Sorry?
So we're gonna need that money back.
But see, the thing of it is, the federal government, mainly, the reason why the federal government is doing this is so we can cycle this money back into the economy and put people back to work and try to move our nation forward. And that's what this money was intended for.
How many employees involved in that?
What, 86?
Eighteen.
About 86.
Out of county. How many?
Well, that's all full-time employees.
Full-time employees and some part-time employees, they're in a beta hire.
Yeah.
So all employees got some?
Yeah, we also gave some of the, what do you call them, the volunteers, because they're, they're on the first line, they've got some. The full-time employees were the ones, if they were not allowed to work from home.
Was there something to employees who were working prior, working at the beginning of the pandemic? All those employees included, may not be working now, but.
They had to be currently employed.
Currently.
We confirmed that twice with the municipal association. The municipal association has gone to the Secretary of State to get an opinion to make sure it's reemphasized in writing that we did the right thing. But everybody's saying that if you were not employed on the day the money was released, you were not eligible for it.
Okay, because I had several people to approach me.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we told them about that.
What if they came, what if they came forward after that? What if they came and moved?
During the pandemic?
During the pandemic.
If they were employed, if they were employed on October 29th on our payroll, they got the, they got the premium pay.
Okay, well, how much, what criteria did you use to decide? Who got the comment? Did everybody get the same amount?
Yes. If you were the police and fire, you got the same amount. If you were a part-time or on-call, what is it called? Volunteer? They got a lesser amount, because they're not on regular, but they are out there in the front lines.
Okay, but what about the regular city employees?
They got a lesser amount.
Okay, how were you able to determine, what criteria did you use?
We surveyed the surrounding areas, and we were comfortable with the surrounding areas.
Because I feel that was what they had tabled last month. And that was the one?
No, ma'am. We tabled the Blatty Street Park.
Okay. But still trying to understand what formula did you use to decide who got what pay?
I'm not, if you were employed on October.
You said something, you said like the police, uh, 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 and the fire got a certain pay. Volunteers got a certain pay. So across the board, nobody got the same thing?
Yeah, everybody got the same thing. If you were a full-time employee, you got the same thing. Whether you were a police chief, or you were an engineer, or you were a police officer, or if you were, you know, you got the same thing. If you were in the fire, in the public safety area.
Okay, when did you start dispersing the money?
We dispersed it when y'all approved the resolution.
So that was about two?
Three weeks ago.
Okay.
Two weeks ago?
Yeah. Because I'm hearing through the break ran that some employees did not get the money. I don't know how true that is.
Well, I have a complete list, we balance everything. Every employee, that full-time employee that was on our books on October 29th got a check.
Okay.
They got the same, they got the same check if they just started working June.
Yes, but they, we still, we still in COVID. We still in COVID.
So, so, so there appears to be a disparity in the dispersing amount. How much did each employee get?
Well, it depends. I mean, you can't say that because each employee has a different tax bracket. Because we also took their taxes out. It's mandated that we had to pay the taxes on that money.
I understand.
So somebody, this person may have a higher tax bill, and somebody may be claiming non-dependence, and their tax bill is very low. And somebody may be claiming zero, so they've got a high tax bill. So we had a base amount that the fire and police got, and we had a base amount. And then from there, the federal taxes and state taxes and back taxes were paid.
Where's my money?
You're an elected official.
My question, I don't understand. Why can't you tell me what each police officer got?
4,000 dollars.
I mean, that's all on?
Yeah, 4,000 dollars.
Whether he'd been there six months or 24 months?
Correct.
But they had to be employed on October 29th.
See, but we're still in COVID.
I understand that.
Yes, we're still in COVID.
So anyone who poured that and when the pandemic started, did not receive it? If they were not employed?
Correct.
Say if they were employed until October 29th, they had received it?
If they left on October, if they left before the resolution was signed, they didn't get anything. They weren't employed or on the payroll at that point. Anybody that was on the payroll and on our roster that day got their check.
And I can, I can provide a little guidance here too. So just at a policy level from the federal government, the federal government said, hey, we want you to find those people who were most impacted by COVID, right? Who, who is the front line? Police, fire, healthcare workers. And they didn't say it like this, but paraphrasing, we really want you to try and utilize that premium pay as much as you can for them versus other employees who were not quote-unquote "front lines." Now, they didn't say, you know, here's a proportionate figure that you have to work off of to justify a differentiation, but they did say the premium pay can't be more than X. 150% of pay, that can't be more than 25,000 dollars. There's these general parameters that they work off of where their hope is, there is sort of a nuanced application of maybe this sort of employee is getting more than this employee. And they wanted to incentivize, okay, to those people who remained employed during COVID, what incentive can we provide? And so, yes, you have this, these two factors of, okay, at some point, there's got to be a date certain. We want to incentivize those who have stayed employed. And then, of course, we can't do any, or the city can't do anything until, you know, a resolution is passed to approve as much. And so you've had a lot in the private sector have to say, okay, this is our cutoff date of if you weren't employed here, COVID is still ongoing, and therefore you didn't stay on during all of COVID. While it would be maybe perfect from a policy perspective to have some money go to them, from a policy perspective, that's not how this has read. And when we've gone to the municipal association for guidance and confirmation of that, as William has said, they've confirmed that twice about being employed on the date of when a resolution's passed. So that's why there can be a nuance of who's getting paid what and why there's that date certain on it, just from a, just speaking strictly from the interim rule that the Treasury Department set out.
So many came forward.
Whatever, from October 1st of this year. Get the same thing that somebody's worked on for years of COVID. I don't understand that. I mean, I, the way.
The current rule and reads, it's from, what was it, March of last year? And it's going forward. I think it's going forward until this pandemic officially ends. So it's not just, it's not a past performance payment. It's a payment for this form of time and going forward.
We went through this 155, 152 page opinion from the federal government, what we tried to decipher. Now, somebody else could read, Charlie could read, he could get something else out of it that maybe we read different. So everybody who reads is getting something else. So that's why we make sure when we do what we do and before we follow and do anything, we check it out with our municipal association, who is really our leader that gives us our guidance and sets forth the rules and regulations that we should be abiding by, because they're trying to use the same thing to be consistent across the state of South Carolina. And that's why they said they've been bombarded with the very same questions that y'all have asked here tonight. They have been bombarded with these questions. And they are going to the state attorney to get an opinion to make sure we have followed everything to the letter of the law. Now, I will commit here that if the state attorney's opinion says we got to go back and do A, B, and C, that we have not already done A, B, and C, we're going to follow it to the letter of the law.
Yeah, because my position on that is, in all fairness, to avoid any possibility of liability, I think every city employee should get the same amount. Regardless of what their duties and responsibilities are, they should get the same amount.
What did they say though?
You mentioned something about the tax bracket. You see, the ones in the higher tax bracket are going up higher. The little ones at the bottom, what the wrong?
And we say tax bracket, but I've got, I've got people that claim ten dependents, and they got two children. I can't keep them from doing ten dependents. So that means at the end of the year, they're going to end up owing the federal government because they're not doing their taxes correctly.
Everybody got the same gross pay?
Correct. But everybody got the same amount.
Firefighters and police got an additional $500.
So each employee got 4,000?
And firefighters and police all got 4,000 dollars.
Correct.
They got an additional $500 premium because they were out on the streets, working directly with the public. That was the theory behind giving them that additional premium.
Whose criteria is that?
Basically, the survey that was taken across our area. The counties, municipalities, everybody within our areas with the same amounts.
Williamsburg County, Clarendon County, they paid their true frontline workers a higher premium. And they paid their essential workers, because I think the municipal association has defined essential workers as those who could not work from home, that had to be in the office to work. They paid all of them premium pay as well. But we had our building closed and everything, so we didn't have as much direct contact with the public as, say, the police officers that were making stops and the firefighters that were going to people's homes and everything.
So this information gleaned from these other cities you talked to, that's not from the?
We vetted it with the municipal association. It was, everything was vetted through the municipal association to make sure we're within our guidelines. What's her name? Erica Wright?
Yes.
Erica Wright. And she's the one that's probably read about every page back and forth, up and down, and knows the American Rescue Plan probably in her sleep.
If it made y'all feel any better, I spent Friday for six hours with a room of 50 other municipal lawyers trying to get these sentences on, because this is the interim rule.
I think it was still on.
There it is. The questions y'all are asking, everyone is asking. Everyone wants to have as equitable payment as they can. And so everyone's trying to get guidance from the attorney general, from the municipal association. We all have sort of these same questions. Interestingly, Lake City was, well, let me put it this way. A lot of other counties especially paid out premium pay months ago before there was really any guidance at all. And it's sort of a free-for-all. And so I can't say Lake City has tried to be more discerning in, you know, what is right and what is more right than more wrong about how to disperse these monies. And there could be, as we alluded to earlier, more guidance. And if so, heck, that'd be fantastic. Because right now, it's, it's, uh, but the processes taken by William have been checked off on by the municipal association in those regards.
And in a roundabout way, the American Rescue Plan, when the government put it together, they couldn't come up with the easiest way to distribute the funds, equitable. So they decided the most easiest and efficient, quickest way to distribute funds would be based on population. And it just so happens, we're a small population, so we got our money from the state. Whereas Florence, or Greenville, Columbia, they got their money from the federal government. And when we were so far behind is because we were getting emails from a place that said, do not respond emails. Our system would not let it come through. So when the municipal association contacted us and said, why aren't you responding to your emails? Our system would not allow it to come through. So we went through a backdoor, so to speak, to get registered. And once that happened, they opened it up for us to receive the proper emails. And then everything started flowing. But we didn't know that. Our system blocked it until they called us and said, what's going on?
I don't think you were the only ones, but Erica mentioned that at the meeting so that you could.
Like seven, three municipalities were the same way.
Yeah, she was like, make sure you take this down.
We also had to wait for the governor to actually take the story.
Yes, to take the money.
To the state level. So there was a delay there as well. Whereas bigger, few city families, they got their money four months ago. But like William said, they were allowed to go on the federal website directly for all their money.
So indeed, back to the investing in our infrastructure, we, these items that are on this list are something that's been on our list for quite a while. Matter of fact, some of these same items we talked about at the budget retreat in this same room that was presented to you on items we needed to address. And when we sat down and reevaluated the situation that the city was in, these are some of the main, most important items. And Ricky's here this evening. If y'all have any questions on any one of this, he's here, the expert is here to share in regards to these and speak on it individually if y'all want to.
He's been called a lot of things with expert property.
I'll look at him as due diligence. He knows, he can probably tell you where Ford's life's running in this evening. So y'all have any questions? Go ahead, Ricky, here. Talk about each one of them. Because we can go back to the pictures. We can start the checkerboard, checkerboard well on the tower.
Okay, yeah, the checkerboard, I think we just had our inspections done back in November. That tank would be the one that we need to have refurbished on our list. It's in dire need of pain. I think we might get by through this year and possibly the next another year. But it's in dire need of pain. And this is the well also that he spoke of a while ago. This well here is not the original well. You can see the pipe coming off this building here. The original well was actually inside that building. And I think may have been drilled in '69. I'm not certain. The pump that was put in the well that you're looking at there to the right, that well was drilled in 1982. And the pump inside of it's a 1969 pump.
But they use some energy, doesn't it?
Yeah. And when it actually began, the records that they have on it show the water, the static water level is actually five feet deep. And now, I think it's like 88 feet. So that's how much water we've looked and lost over the years. And so we're actually having that well refurbished now and working on. And it was going to be to help with the tank that they're actually going to be installing out at the hospital, out on Highway 52 to help with that a little bit. Not knowing Glenn and William had submitted the request out for bids to have this done. And about a week before the bid was due, we lost Mar Street well. Mar Street well is another old well. And the last time we checked in it was several years ago. It was like 75 feet static level. It is now 85 feet level, at static level. And at Mar Street, we're going to be probably facing the same thing. It actually stopped real quick, didn't give us any notice that it was going to quit. It was just like cutting the lights which, it was pumping one day and the next day it wasn't. When they pulled the pump out of the well, about eight inches of water was actually touching the well. So this well, both of them are going to have to be rent farther in the well. Hopefully, we can do that. But it's going to cost, I mean, be able to save both the wells. Still have them in service. It's just going to cost them to get it. The other Matthews well, that tank is, this one here is yellow and it's behind the high school, blue and gold. That tank actually needs a cleaning right now as far as the milli on it. But in the next few years, too, this one actually needs to be painted also. And I think that the numbers that we had got were verbal and from the engineering firm, and they were like $400,000 each for the checkerboard and the Matthews. And that's not concrete. That's just a good ballpark estimate.
But it's within range of like the other one that we had taken care of, correct?
That's right, yeah. Mar Street, yes, yeah, Wall Street and Mar Street. We had recently done one in '17 and I don't know what, 20?
And Ricky, speak. Let council know that you just went through a DEHAC inspection and talk on your inspection and where we stand with that inspection.
We have to go through a, it's called a sanitary survey inspection every year. DEHAC comes and checks our records, checks everything that we have to record for the year. And then they actually come out and do a physical inspection of your system, pulling samples out of your system, checking your fluorine lift, checking all your records that you have, bacterialogical sampling, any places that you've had water main breaks during the year. I know a lot of times the public probably gets upset sometimes when they see these boil water notices, but that's not coming from us. That is a DEHAC regulation and EPA. Once we have a water line break, we have to issue a boil water advisory. Most of the time, there's no problem. Matter of fact, I don't know of any other time that we had a problem. It's just the publicity of it going out and you stating that you've got a boil water advisory. Every time, I can remember so far, every time we repeated and pulled our samples, they were always good. And we notified the public, you know, it was good to go. We did finish those up in November. We got a letter back a few weeks ago stating that it was good. We did have a satisfactory again this year. So everything was looking good. But they did, you know, they did note that, you know, some of these things that we would be needing to do in the future to plan for. But overall, we did get a satisfactory inspection on it.
Now, and when he says satisfactory, you can't get any more but a satisfactory. So, I mean, in regards to that, Ricky has taken very good care of our infrastructure for water sewer and our wells.
How often do they do those? Do they let you know when they're coming or?
Well, with the sanitary, West Ward will differ. You don't know when they come. They just show up. On the sanitary survey, we know, we don't know exactly what date. We do know that it's usually going to be in November or either December. So.
So annually?
Not a certain date, but usually in November, December, they'll be here.
Now, so the sewer cave in over at Carver and Floyd Street, Ricky, if you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Carver and Floyd Street is, we had several major cave-ins. Some of them have already been what we call a form prepared, already been taken care of. This one is still out there. This is a deep line. It's probably 15 feet deep. It's on the shoulder of Carver Street, at the intersection of Carver Street and Floyd Avenue. The line was actually not replaced, but it's actually a slip line in the mid-'80s. And the main is no longer clay pipe, but it's actually HDPE pipe, which is a high density polyethylene pipe, but it was slip lined. Right now, we've got a problem at one of the manholes. And really, really don't know what the problem is. It is excavated and you kind of find at that time what the problem is. That line stayed surcharged pretty much all the time. The last repair we made was over off of Brown Street, downstream from this one. And that one helped tremendously. But it's going to probably be the same problem here that it was on Brown Street. It was actually a little bit deeper there between Brown Street and Anderson Street is where that line runs. But here, you could face bypass pumping, which is very costly, but you can't cut the sewer floor. And you've got to keep it moving. So you could be facing bypass pumping and then also the road repair back. All those, all those numbers get expensive.
Now, to cause, what does dancing, I mean, digging deep testament to do dancing Rogers?
So what's the cost on Carver and Floyd?
Cost is, I think what we estimate?
180,000. We also have to make arrangements when we get the, what the crane to get it off, because they're very heavy and just roll them off. And then we'll be able to schedule with Dig Deep to get it done. So that's something, that's infrastructure that's, for five years, has never been addressed. And we're going to go ahead and get that taken care of in the very, very near future.
Let's not say that, Mr. President. Let's say we probably fund it.
Fund it, yeah. Never had funds to do it.
We actually had.
That was going to be my next question. What was the reason why it's just sitting there?
We actually got quotes on it when they were building the RV park on Church Street. The contractor was down there. He actually gave us a quote on it. I think it's around 220 or 225,000 dollars. So Williams already spoke with Dig Deep. They gave us a process on doing it. And then thankful William and the mayor and Mr. Aston, the local people got together. And the state has gave that pipe. And I don't know what that cost is, but it is very expensive. Because that's 72-inch pipe. We could get you a number off your line, but they have donated that pipe. But we had a very good meeting. And that's what came out of it, everybody working together.
So anything else, Ricky, you want to share? Y'all have any questions?
What's everything to dance, everything you need to go into?
Well, what we're just listing on here right now is, you have it in your sheet. It's the checkerboard water tank, the Matthews water tank, the sewer cave in over at Carver and Floyd, the Martha Law sewer replacement is what we have. And next year, Ricky wants to do some of the sewer back. So at the end of the day, when you look at everything that we have for infrastructure, sewer and water, we've allocated pretty much all the money. We have about, what, a hundred thousand dollars? Ninety thousand dollars left, which then we can earmark to help with dancing Rogers.
Martha, Martha's, what's everything you need to do to the towers?
What's everything you need to do to the towers?
What is going to be or we expect it to be?
The water towers, they will actually have to be, they'll be taken out of service. They'll be taken out of service for several months, probably. It has to be sandblasted. There's a lot of work that they have to do to it. And they get them sandblasted and they're actually painting back. And you have to have a special paint that they paint them with because of the water coming in contact with. And sometimes you have to upgrade. This one's already been upgraded far as any downspouts or anything like that. So it'll probably just be sanding and painting.
I remember long ago, Mar Street, it seemed like that was like 150,000, 170,000, 15,000 to paint it?
No, that was probably Mar Street.
We did Wallace Street, one of our first highlands. It was about five years ago.
Yeah, 2017, no, yeah, 2017, I believe, when that was done.
Wallace Street, that was in 2019. It was three and a half.
Almost four.
That was paid for running the park.
And some, and some brand on Instagram, yeah. So at the end of the day, when the American Rescue Plan said the city could replace lost revenues, we calculate, reality that the city lost about $500,000 in revenue through June 30th, 2021. GFOA has a calculation out there that says we lost about 1.1 million. But in reality, when we look at our books, we've lost about 500,000. The city's not looking to replace any of that revenue. We feel that our infrastructure is more important than replacing revenue because. We feel that our infrastructure is more important than replacing revenue because at the end of the day, we are anticipating we will be contributing to the fund balance and we'll have a surplus of cash in the water and sewer when the audit's finished for June thirty, twenty twenty-one. So that means we were able to recognize the shortfall in revenue and address it on our expense side, so we wouldn't have to worry about how we're gonna pay to operate.
Is this water and sewer?
That's everything, yes, sir. That's water and sewer, because we also have a loss of judicial and water and sewer. The judicial loss because they weren't able to have court.
So I know we can't just, you know, bank this money, obviously we gotta spend it. But replacing revenue would be something very similar to that, right?
But basically, you're just putting it back in your, in your bank account saying, I'm replacing what I lost. But if we have a contribution to the fund balance and we have a surplus of expenses for water and sewer, I don't think it's appropriate to say that we need to replace lost revenue.
Well, I'm looking at this show and I agree with everything on here, because a lot of this stuff's been on here for years. Great ideas, but I think we can do kind of more with it, because if we had the money for it, we can go ahead and somewhat start on it. But at the same time, parallel, go after grant funds for it.
Yes.
So, you know, the end cost might be far lower. And even a worst case scenario, right now, the USDA, and don't point me on this, is giving towns similar to ours forty-year loans to do stuff like this at, it's like one percent. So the inflation rate's two and a half percent projected over the next couple of decades. So if you borrow money from USDA right now, you actually pay less money over time, given inflation. So it's probably the only time I've ever seen this, and it's not gonna last long.
So there is a prohibition on, you cannot use the monies to issue debt or make debt service payments on these infrastructure projects?
Yeah, I don't think that would do, because it'd just be taking the place, like, you know, example would be Martha Law. We spent seven hundred and fifty grand of ARPA, but we then we get a loan for seven fifty from USD. Worst case scenario, we don't get any grants, which, you know, has no actual debt payment. We're just kind of offsetting the cost. And that's a worst case scenario. But a good case scenario is we get grant money for each of these.
We are waiting for the documentation and a complete detail of the Biden's infrastructure.
Yeah, stuff like that.
And Haiti's waiting for the documentation to see how in-depth that, we can benefit from that as well.
Yeah.
Because that's a lot, that's infrastructure, roadways, broadband and water sewer projects. So it's not that we're not aware of it, but we just looked at that worst case scenario that the city didn't want to wait and go through the whole, jump through hoops, because, I mean, this is a process of getting grants.
Yeah, and that's why I bring up the USDA loan, because they will throw that out quick because you're just getting loan money, it's not going through, you know, year-long grant process. And understandably, some of these are very tight since it's like the Martha Law. But I bring that up because if you can borrow money at one percent and inflation's two and a half percent, you know, that's, you know, take that deal all day.
We're getting pretty maxed out in our debt service ratios. You know, the debt service ratio is taking your operating expenses and income and seeing how many times those overlap to where you can pay your debt service.
That's general fund, but water sewer, water sewer is calculated off of the general.
Over the last three years, that's steadily been declining. We're only at like a one point seven five turnover ratio now. So, and we've got four point seven million debt that we just brought on for the way it's worth. So there's things there that we can't.
Yeah, pushes up against that limit.
Right.
We're about maxed out with debt.
So I think that's what I would say, the essence of it is we have to make sure we don't overspend ourselves or overindulge to the extent that we're making it difficult for the citizens and our quest and opportunity to make sure that we can get these loans and stuff situated, that we can repay them without stringing everything else in the system.
Because to take into consideration that Mayor Council voted and the ordinance in place that every year we have to contribute to the fund balance. And if we stretch our neck all the way out to the point that we're paying every penny in debt, that means we then will not be able to contribute to the fund balance, because that's calculated into a budget also.
So this second half of the stream, the second half of the money that we've allocated, that list almost likely gonna look different from the first one.
Well.
Due to possibly what the infrastructure bill, I don't know what we make out of that.
We're still waiting for the final documentation, because every month, this is an interim ruling, and we're hoping it don't change it, but it's the federal government.
There's been some discussion that there might be twenty-two specified areas of infrastructure that can be spent on. That number twenty-two has come out. We don't know exactly what, but so that's obviously a big number considering what we can spend this money on, or what the city can spend this money on, there's only seven items. So, but we don't really have any guidance on when those twenty-two are gonna come out.
All I know is the federal government wants the money that's spent and back into the economy as soon as possible. That's the main reason for them doing this.
Is that the one, twenty twenty-four, that we need to get this spent?
It has to be earmarked, even though it's not completely written out. So with that, we're not gonna recoup, we're not asking to recoup. We're gonna contribute everything back to the infrastructure. And we're not even gonna ask for any money for our administrative services, which we can, if we wish, pay ourselves for managing the American Rescue Plan funds. We've opted that we're gonna do it, taking on as just another task and balance it as part of the city's books and not ask for any administrative services. So at the end of the day, if we're in this to the point that anything that we do, if with the American Rescue Plan, we still have to do a reporting by category on how we spend these funds. So it's the same thing as the way it tells us how you can spend it, we have to report it. And it's how long, ten years, if we have to keep up with this?
Yes.
Ten years. So from twenty twenty-one, twenty thirty-one, then we could finally say we're through with it. But yet, we need to keep those files in case they come and ask us questions. So that's my take on the American Rescue Plan. That's from what we get from municipal association, from everybody that we have that was involved with it. Glenn and I reading that book, what, several times? You know, every time you read it, you see something different or you view it something different. But that's what we have for the American Rescue Plan.
Okay.
Can I just add one thing, that whatever you guys had to do, as of right now, it does look like these funds from the federal government are gonna follow a single audit requirement. Anything covering over seven hundred, any entity receiving more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in federal grant funding, they're required to have a single audit done, which is where they come in and audit the revenue expenditures related to the federal grant funding. Each program has a specific set of compliance requirements. Whatever the salary, we make sure that we have the staff and the knowledge and the know-how to maintain these compliance requirements. Because if we come back with a negative once we submit it to the federal clearinghouse for those single audits, you know, the federal government could come back and say you didn't comply with the program.
And I'll just throw out there, and since we're talking about audits, our June thirty, twenty twenty-one audit is underway. And, I mean, they're finishing up on it now, and I think it's a record for the city to be through with their current year's audit this time of the year. So finance, the city has made a big, huge leap in the audit world.
Glenn, did I understand, hearing you say that we would have to hire additional staff to handle this? Is that my understanding, is that what you were suggesting?
It depends on what way you guys go with this. As far as the public health initiatives and stuff like that, there's gonna have to be a program set up and established, and there's gonna have to be people to work that program. There's so many different routes that you can take with it. Like I said, some of it's very hazy as far as explanations and it gives general suggestions. But I don't think we, as the city, have the staff right now to set up additional programs. So hiring of the staff would also be cost related to that. You know, it's not just, you know, we can just pass out money. You know, like if we're going for the people that were directly impacted by the COVID financially and stuff like that, parental assistance and everything, we'd still have to put those guidelines in place to establish what requirements would be, how the residents would prove that, you know, they were directly financially impacted, whether it's comparing current prior year tax returns or, you know, we'd have to have staff that can run that program. So I believe, yes, additional staff would be necessary.
How soon you think this may be needed?
Ma'am?
How soon you think we probably need staff?
He hadn't even made a decision what you're gonna do yet.
Just gonna ask the question.
Yeah, I have no clue. I'm assuming there'd be a lot of back and forth with Charlie and municipal association about what requirements for the program would be. We don't have the city staff that can say exactly what these programs are gonna be from a legal perspective.
And based on if we were sticking, we stick with the infrastructure, we probably are not gonna add on other criteria or programs, then the staff we have probably would be able to maintain it in our current structure at most.
As far as accountability and everything, infrastructure is going to be the easiest route. With that being said, these projects are gonna have to be done one way or another, either through grant funding, which we're running low on staff to handle the grant management. And we've got ten or eleven current grants running now. We've got a finding department of three people, four people, if you include payroll. The grant funding, you know, we are a rural community, so we're gonna usually always qualify through something through RIA or EDA or EBA or USDA. But at the same time, it's, these projects are going to have to be done some way in the near future, whether it's rates, water and sewer rates for communities, or paying for grant funding and everything. So it's one of those things that, how do you want these projects paid for?
When you're talking about doing things like that, or grants or whatever, if they don't think you are, put your problem out in the project, they're gonna tell you now that you're not, that you're not taking in the correct water rates, sewer rates, am I right?
Yeah, you're right, because you have to meet their guidelines to be able to participate in these programs.
Currently, EDA, their grants for the water and sewer infrastructure, they pay eighty percent, we're required to produce a twenty percent match. But the last three grants we've gotten with them, for the Four Spain project over here, the MUSD hospital, and maybe just the last two grants, we've also had RIA, the Rural Infrastructure Authority, also contributed to that, where we paid on the Four Spain over here, out of pocket expense from the city was only seven hundred and seven dollars. And we got a one point five million dollar four.
Well, and not just say that, but that were the hospital, when the bids came in, it was like one point nine million dollars over.
Yeah.
What we had, in thirty days, Hayden and went by EDA, and in thirty, thirty-five days, we had the money sitting next to the bed, listening to the money.
But there's a lot of paperwork for these grants, as far as each one requires specific submissions. You know, right now, we've got the two EDA grants, two RIA grants, the Land Water Conservation Fund Grant, the Florence County One Percent Fund was a separate grant. We've got the American Rescue Plan as a grant. What else we got out there? We've got the smaller grants for like.
USDA money for the equipment.
USDA loan and the USDA grants.
So we are on a former basis of the day, we're having to get, we can say to me.
If there's a funding source out there for right now, we've got it applied for pretty much.
For example, we've got, we've applied for a hundred, fifty thousand dollars to help pay for a piece of equipment we need out over at the landfill. And so it's just like with the garbage trucks, we got about a hundred thousand dollars reimbursement for the garbage trucks, it goes, you know, it's just money that we didn't have to pay out, we got it back, we had to put the cash upfront. And in really reality, we can't officially order or even sign a purchase order to a USDA, say, here's your money. But they overload that and allow us to go ahead and do the garbage trucks because of the situation we're in. It was a big emergency situation.
Well, you all know too, the city has a person, Katie Sykes, I think I missed her name, but that's her job. She's not an employee of the city, she's a contractor, but her job is to find these grants, and she does. And just like with the hospital, it's important to understand that not only are we not coming out of pocket, or the city has not come out of pocket much at all, but by having that tower now, we've expanded our base, our payer base significantly. So not only are we getting almost two million dollars about in grant funds, we're expanding our base that's just gonna allow the city to grow the revenues there.
Especially for these grants, we direct her to look for these grants, so she's just always looking for these grants for us?
She's always looking, but we say, for example, we say, hey, we need a sewer pump station. She'll go out and say, concentrate on the area, she knows she can get the money quickest and the easiest for the sewer pump station.
Has she been doing this for us for years?
Years.
I'm just wondering, because a lot of things that's been needing work for years, we haven't been doing because of funding.
But let me rephrase that, she's been on us for, this will be her second year, because she came from the Moore Foundation.
That's true, yeah.
She was doing work on our behalf with the Moore Foundation, but we're getting better response and a lot, a quicker turnaround now than we were before.
And she does it for multiple cities. Maybe that's how.
She's right about some things, because we, we as a council, prior to me or anybody else on here, we would patch things. I'm sorry? We would patch things. We would not fix them, because we didn't want to spend the money, we didn't want to raise the rates and all that stuff. And I really believe that if we did a good job explaining to the people, they would understand our rates, because today, the water plant shuts, water system shuts down and the sewer system shuts down, you think they're not gonna be upset? And they need to realize it. I mean, it's, when you run around here with fifty and sixty and seventy years of stuff, it's gonna happen one day, and they're gonna be upset, and they're gonna blame the mayor.
Well, and this right here.
That's why we're addressing, that's why we're.
And this right here, that I passed out tonight, this, we just literally got this, this is a fine example of our infrastructure and the age it is, what, nineteen sixty-nine and nineteen eighty-something? So that's exactly why.
Put that one in, Rick?
We need to start looking and.
I mean, we gotta agree. And I think you should understand it, I mean, you are, I mean, it needs more, a couple of cell or your water, I mean, big deal, but I know it's a big deal to some that understand it.
So we're doing catch-up pretty much, we catching up and upgrading on the things that we should have been upgrading and maintaining.
We've been just keeping up with what's going on and addressing as it happens.
There's a lot of infrastructure that was put in the ground thirty, thirty-five years ago and it's been patched. There hasn't really been a long-range capital planning. No way to ask a budget for it.
So in a roundabout way, y'all were asked to send in questions, and we do have some people that did send in some questions, and you have that list in front of you. And I think if you read the questions, number one and two, it's pretty much been answered with the presentation, right down to the public, it's writing for the ARP funds. We went through that whole process. And how are we gonna use the funds of Lake City, will it be available in writing? We produced it, it's on here, and all these documents will be put on the website for anybody to view that wants to do it. Plus, we have it being sent out to Facebook, this whole meeting was broadcast on Facebook tonight.
Okay, one quick question before you proceed. The list, we're trying, the list that we have tonight, is this trying to be the list that is being turned in, or how are we gonna do it?
That's our recommendation, that we came to you with what, when we sat down to talk, these were the most important pieces that we felt we needed to talk with. And with what we had, the guidelines of the money that we had sitting in, that we knew we were getting, that suited that funds.
Okay, so this is just a recommendation that we need to think about?
It's a recommendation. Now, what will happen is the next step will be, we'll put forth a resolution to say this is what we want to move with. And y'all will then at that point say, you know, no, we're not gonna do it, or we need to talk about it more. And y'all will then, at that point, say, you know, no, we're not going to do it, or we need to talk about it more. So, number, any other thing, uh, Councilmember Ross? So number three is, uh, is the one dealing with the CDG funds. Uh, we actually got, what, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for life housing. That was awarded to us, that was sent out. Uh, we're, we're not going to be releasing addresses, because we don't want to be, everybody bombarding us, why wasn't this chosen, why wasn't that? We had to meet the guidelines that the federal government stated, and it was the southeastern quadrant, southeastern. Southwestern quadrant of the city. And it's in that area that we will be working in, and there are thirty-five addresses that the federal government agreed to. Now, once we begin the money, because there are some classes that our people will be attending to learn more about how to handle this, follow the proper protocol and procedures in processing this, they have to sit through a class, on, what's that, your favorite?
Federal Department of Energy, CDG has a very intensive program, it's very structured, very rigid. They don't allow, or a lot of leadway has had, like EDA, EDA has been very willing to work with us to give funding for everything. And CDG, CDG is very willing to, you know, this is the fund, this is exactly how you're allowed to spend it, this is exactly how you're allowed to work. So you don't make those. Yeah, you don't make those, they're not there telling you how far you can step forward.
So who's allowed to go to that plan?
It's very, it's a great program.
Well, we've, we've got Haiti, Lynn, Amy, we're going to choose, let's see.
Haiti, Haiti and Amy.
Okay, that's the three, because this is limited in space. But when I, when I say that, when you get involved with these programs, and to get us to the point that we were able to even apply for it, we were jumping through hoops and, and committing to this and that and whatnot, this is also something that we committed to, that we would go through this education to manage these funds properly, yes, sir.
My question is, when you decide to go start that, you got to pick the training and all that, and you enlist all of them?
We're, we're going to be, we will sit down, and y'all will see that list, but we don't want to put it out in the public until we start working in the area.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So the public, the public will be notified just right before.
Yes, yes.
But you said it's thirty-five addresses total?
I think it is thirty-five addresses that the federal government approved.
In the southwest?
In the southwestern part, yes.
Yes, CDG, they could like, keep the addresses all within the same district type thing. Um, I believe Haiti's already come without a fine for this grant for next year to go to another area, right?
Well, or either that, get with the homeowners and try to replace what we tear down. So there's two sides here, I mean, we could clean up, but do we want to leave vacant lots? You know, even, and she was even brought up to the attention that we have to then make some attempt to put back what we were moving.
Last, last conversation with Haiti, my email, talked about as this one is running out, should already be starting on the next one, you know, getting that in, guideline, so that it's continuous, um, rather than starting and stopping all over again.
I had a question asked, I mean, um, is there going to be any funding for senior housing, especially living in a low-water area, like, so house a problem? And she wouldn't know, is there any kind of money that would be up there available to help, uh, cleaning the home?
That probably would be more in what we're hoping to do in the second stage as a rebuilding and a resurfacing and a refurbishing of houses. That, that's the conversation.
As of now, there's nothing.
As of now, it's cleanup, yes, sir. There's nothing to refurbish. Now, there are various organizations.
There are some programs, but not as far as what we're talking here, but there are some programs.
Can you give me that information?
Yes, ma'am.
USDA has, uh, people that, uh, they have, uh, application that citizens can file it on, they follow a certain income limit, um, that they can apply directly for grants, systems, and stuff like that.
The unsecured?
Yes, ma'am, USDA.
Okay.
And some, some of these homes, are they like vertical burnout homes?
I, I, I've not seen them, I just know that I've seen the addresses, and I have seen some of the pictures, but yeah, some of them are burnt out, right?
Maybe they may send it to you over there, or myself, or Matt.
I know we got, we got certain burnout homes, they're just sitting there.
So, on number four, the question was regarding the Community Center on Cold Road. Uh, in January, at the January council meeting, uh, GMP will be there to present their rendition of what Cold Road would look like. Uh, they have been meeting with, uh, the Recreation Department and, and whatnot to get what they need to facilitate, uh, the, to put it in the architectural drawing. So, they are planning to come at the January council meeting to present everything that they gathered up. So, that's when we're going to be sharing their drawings with us. The stormwater projects, uh, they're handled by the state, correct? And we're on, on tap, on, on schedule with those, correct? So we're at their mercy, because all we're doing is just, you know, giving them access to our properties to fix the stormwater, and all the bills are being paid through them. That's why when we did the walkthrough.
I like that one, so I like that.
Yeah, we don't have any cash flow run through. So, and, and we did the walkthrough, everybody saw the same thing, and they gave them an idea on what they needed to move forward. So they're scheduled, what, starting this spring?
Spring, spring of twenty-two.
Are we still having that public hearing to allow, to let the public know what we're going on here at that time?
What we'll probably do, they will get notices in their mail, in their, uh, in their water bills, and then we'll do Facebook, we can do phone bikes to let everybody know, these are the areas that stormwater will be working in. So they will be informed.
But at a point to have questions answered, if they have questions, I mean the.
I'm not being, I think we're at the point, it's past questions and answers.
Well, not, not from us, I'm saying as far as for the public to understand what's going on and what it'd be, what's going to be happening. Of course, they'll be informed by, you know, those, um, through the water bill and so forth, um, social media, but if they have any questions, how will their questions be answered?
All right, let me, let me put something together and give some thought to that. And, uh, once we have, what, the rest of this year, January, February, let's see, we can put you guys, okay?
William, to that point, you want to update on the airport?
Now, this is stormwater, we have, I need some with the airport, that's, that's handled through Florence County. They're going to take care of all that. Uh, Dancin' Rogers Street, Councilmember Cook, we, we pretty much give you a rundown on that one. Uh, South Carolina State Assistance, uh, number six, I'm sorry, I skipped that one. Everybody that we speak to, we advertise, we let them know about all the opportunities for assistance. And, and we have, um, and we're in the process of putting together one precise sheet where everybody can go to and say, these are the areas, these are the people that you can, uh, contact for assistance in electricity, housing, water, sewer, um, and help them that way.
The SC State Per, State Plus Program, they send us a spreadsheet, that they send everything to the State Department as far as payments. I think the last spreadsheet we said, we got, there were four hundred and something applicants on there already. So I think that's been a good program for the city of Lake City for, so far, for our citizens. I mean, we got thirty-seven hundred, uh, water sewer accounts, so we have four hundred people, and that's ten folks in the other.
And, and PD, Community Action Partnership, that's a program through the federal government that they can apply every month to get assistance with, with their water bills and so forth.
And the State Plus Program, it really does prepay, we had them send over, I think it was fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars for one account, so it's paid for the current balance as well as.
Two months.
Yeah, it takes months to pay, so.
And on some of the old commercial buildings that the question was asked about, Chief Driggers, and they were already checking into some of those that were already on the list. Uh, Florence County's involved with, with one of them, uh, so it's not that they're just sitting there, it's just a process that we have to go through, but they've been, letters have been sent out, they've been put on notice, and we're trying to do what we can do to keep them safe.
It's a lot of Coleman out there, they got some signs out there.
Um, I've contacted Florence County, it's transferred ownership several times. They've got the owner in place, I talked to Sean Scher on the other day. They gave them a sixty-day deadline to make some action, or they're going to take legal action. Um, the biggest name in Coleman is, I don't know if a lot of people know, but due to the contamination that's out there prior to stuff, there's, there's limited to what they can do, so it's kind of one of those situations.
What kind of contamination?
I'm not sure, but there's supposed to be contamination out there prior to, so it's.
Is it hazardous to live here?
No, as long as it's not moved, it's not. There will probably be something that we will look at in the future with a partnership with the county, probably one of the brownfields that we would have to look at as far as funding.
And, and the last question that we have on here regarding the positions hiring and of employees and whatnot, uh, every department head puts together a panel, they interview their process, they send over the ones that they want to consider, Mayor and County Mayor, and I talked to them. Uh, we have a head count, we have a salary range, and so they have the option of, uh, running their operational the way they see fit, and what they need to put in their staff to keep their running with what the current times mandates. So with there, as long as they're within their head count and their salary range, and it's approved, and they meet all the guidelines, and all the background checks and so forth, that's, that's how we, we're doing our hiring process. But we're not just letting people walk in the door without doing checks on them. That, that's, that's happened. And then they have a final interview before they even come on board. So those are the questions that I received, um, and, and at this point, I'm pretty much topped out. Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any updates about the wars and committees?
I'm sorry?
The wars and committees, the vacancies that were out there, do we have an update?
We asked the recommendation of, of Councilman.
Sir?
We'll ask the recommendation of Councilman.
Okay, next week.
Anybody else have any more questions? I hope this was information that was good and helped you understand what we go through and what we're trying to, uh, enforce and follow the, the guidelines of the American Rescue Plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, William.
Yes, sir.
Can you get rid of my motion return?
Thank you.
I go in.
All of them are very.
Thank you all, thank you all.